It's always a fluid process.
Exactly.
It's a guideline, a general guideline, and then you sort of change it as the situation arises.
Yeah. So again, if you guys just wanna review, I think Paul, you had a couple, Missy couldn't make it, but I believe she had a couple suggestions, if you just wanna go over.
Yeah, Missy had four suggestions. One was to redo the kitchen when we redo the community room, which would include carpeting and furniture, which we had planned to do. One was to get some comfortable outdoor seating, which we can certainly do. I assume those concrete things too. One which I don't feel is realistic is, she suggested painting all the units every three years on a rotating basis. That's a lot of manpower, and we don't have enough time maintenance-wise to be able to do that. Plus, I don't think, you know, I don't know about you guys, but I don't paint my rooms in my house every three years. We could work time in that area. And then changing the carpets, well, changing the carpets, we do regularly when a unit becomes empty. Mainly because all the furniture and stuff is out of there, it's easy for the tenant to come in. When you have a tenant living there and then you have to change that carpet, well then, you know, it gets more complicated, we need stuff out, securing it in the hallway. But they were the suggestions, they were very good.
Yeah, are we, if the carpet is in like rough condition...
Well, what we do, our procedure is if somebody says their carpet's old or starting to get a seam come up, Mike goes up and inspects it. And if it needs it, then we call the carpet company, they come in and replace the carpet. In between tenants, we always steam wash, have a company come in and clean all the carpets. So they're clean when a new tenant moves in.
How frequently do you do that, cleaning?
The carpets when the unit turns over.
Oh.
Is there maybe a way, 'cause that would be a cheaper thing to do than replacement, is it possible that it could be budgeted in, like a steam carpet cleaning even every two years or something? Something like that, is that...
For every unit?
Yeah.
That would be a lot. See, the problem really isn't carpet itself, it's all the stuff in the unit. You go into some of these units, you gotta, it's like a rat maze, you gotta walk one. They got stuff stored on each side, we have some people that are baby owners. And it becomes difficult because the guy's coming in to clean, he'll only be able to do this tiny little spot. But you know, we can look at that down the line, we encourage, you know, if somebody has an issue, they write a work order and then we follow up with it.
Are there, I'm sorry, is this, is this okay just to see?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anyone who can come in, like help, like kind of like a non-professional social services, you know, or social services to help those people who are having a hard time? I mean, I know it's a small apartment, you know, and you move from a house, or you move from a lot, and then you're stuck to one bedroom, and that's a lot, it's hard. But do we have services or people who can reach out and help some of the people who might be having a hard time?
We have it in the past, Mike has done it himself oftentimes.
Right.
Or if they have family involved, the family members or something.
Okay. Something maybe we'd be open to, I mean, I can see what's around.
It's hard to find somebody, like we tried to find somebody part-time just to help with the painting and always.
Yeah.
Nobody can get anybody, or they wanna be paid cash, which we can't.
Right, of course.
What about doing the carpet, for example, and even the painting, on like a rotational basis? You have fifty apartments, you know, if you did even five apartments a year, you know, we know every ten years, or ten apartments a year, you know, every five years, you know, things are being painted, things are being, so you know, it's not such an onerous task to do more than one year. That's very hard to do. But if we had some kind of a plan to say, well, you know, everybody's carpet's gonna be cleaned every five years, apartments are gonna be cleaned, I mean painted, you know, every five years. Unless we have an opportunity when somebody moves out.
Right.
You know, then you can do a really good job because there's nothing in the apartment. That might be something to look into, you know, to get...
It's possible we do it by floor.
You could do it by floor too.
One floor a year.
Hire a contractor, you know, like they'll give a five-year contract or something. I don't even know if that's possible, five years, but even if it was just a two-year, one year with the option to renew.
Right.
You know, it might be something that might be more cost-effective. I was thinking about your thing with the storage too, maybe we could get someone to run like a little class or something, like a seminar, you know, and come and say, you know, these are the things that, you know, enhance the quality of life, you know, for those people who have a lot of storage, you know, kinda like put it out there.
Like your coach office.
Yeah, like somebody who just, you know, you have a lot of stuff, you know, and then maybe have some options as to what they can do to, you know, like if they have stuff you wanna get rid of, you know, they can be given to Goodwill, it can be given to the Salvation Army, and then we can always, you know, figure out how to do that. You know, somebody said, yeah, I know I got boxes from, you know, Christmas decorations that I don't need anymore, but I don't wanna throw them away, you know, so give them the options, like these are the people who could really use this.
Yeah.
You know, and some places have sales, like I know the V and A has a big sale up in Far Hills. We have store right on Main Street that takes clothes, you know, and resells them, so, you know, I mean just to...
Well, furniture, when you use Vincent DePaul.
Yeah, yeah. Do they come, they pick up?
Yeah, they're a little bit selective about what they pick up.
Yeah, I know that they don't want furniture with cushions on them, you know, they don't like because of, you know, possible... Yeah, they can't clean it or whatever, but...
Yeah, they've done that, and they've also, the other way, supplied the new tenant moving in.
Oh, nice. Do they actually go to the apartment and would get the furniture?
Yeah.
'Cause I know in three house cleanings that I've done, some of them are very particular. You know, you gotta have it on the first floor.
Well, generally, we will get it on the first floor, if it's not overwhelming, we have it.
Yeah, but I mean, that would be like a no-cost thing, I'm sure you can get volunteer to come in and say, you know, it's spring cleanup, you know, thing, and let's, you know, go through your stuff, let's see what you have, other people can use it, you know, it's just might be something that might urge, even if you get two or three people who wanna do it.
Like I know every town usually has like a mass shredding day. But maybe if the town or worked with the county or something, to get them to actually come here with that truck, instead of...
The shredding, an issue?
The shredding from?
People have a lot of papers.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they have a lot of records.
That's a great idea.
They can come to my house too.
'Cause I'm sure it's difficult for them to bring this stuff over to the recycling yard.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's a great thing to do too.
If they get the truck here, it could help them clean out their paperwork and stuff.
Now, does the borough still get, they used to have them once a year.
At the recycling center, right?
No, we just had a brief conversation about that, the county picks out towns, you know, every year.
Yeah.
And it's been a while since we've done that, but we've been talking about getting shredding, maybe even hiring a shredding company to come. Or looking, I think the county does it, but I'm not sure if there's a cost or if it's for free. So we'll definitely look into that, 'cause we have tons of documents that have to be shredded every year. That we're on a schedule.
Schedule, yeah, just like I am, that I'm on a schedule.
So, you know, it would be, it would be nothing if we have to, if we have the shredder here, you know, to just get the boxes over.
Or even if you had it there, I'd find a way to get them over there.
No, we can get, that wouldn't be an issue, I'm sure that wouldn't be an issue.
I know I talked to Paul about this, and I was speaking to some people in the Environmental Commission who are interested in doing a spring cleanup outside. And maybe getting some, I don't know whether we'd be open to having some like native plants, you know, be put in. I know it has to make sure if they can be, you know, maintained, it has to be in an area that works and they're gonna have construction all over the next few years. But is that still okay to look into?
Yeah, 'cause we've actually paid for last year a spring cleanup, we had a landscaping company commit.
Okay, okay, so that's something that, you know, we...
But if we could, if we volunteers, we'd certainly welcome that really good.
Did DPW ever clean, clean up for you here?
No, what they do is, they're very good at, with the snow, snow removal. They're very, very good about getting over here and clearing their driveway.
Nice to see, make a note, we can contact DPW to, you have sprinklers here?
No.
No.
'Cause they don't really have a lot of land here.
No, no, no.
Well, we have a guy who cuts the grass, and he's, I think he's twenty-five dollars a cut, or thirty-five dollars a cut.
That's wonderful.
And he, you know, sometimes he waits a little too long, but he comes over, we have our own machine, so he doesn't even use his, he just uses our machine.
No, if we can save you a few bucks.
Yeah.
Why not, right, that's the way I look at it.
Very cool. All right, sorry, Anna with the side.
Ellen, did you get any feedback from any independent suggestions or...
Come on, Ellen, save space.
You're the representative, you're the head honcho.
I mean, and as you can see, basically all we're budgeting for right now in this capital plan is the exterior of the building. We roughly only get about ninety-nine thousand dollars a year. I think these panels alone hurt how much...
Well, we had one quote a while ago, which was way too high, to do the whole project was like four point...
Four million.
Four point two million dollars.
So, we are gonna have to bank so many years to probably even just do one side of the building, unless we get more funding along the way.
Where we may get more realistic costs in these, but of what would cost us. I know in my head what I wanna do, I wanna do which sides of the building first, you know. The east side is the worst in terms of deterioration, takes away...
It's in the ocean.
Yeah, and then it would be the front of the building. And then we work our way around, but it would be the east side and that side first.
The main thing, everybody, this is the vents. The vents in our apartments.
So vent cleaning?
The vent cleaning. We have, you know, the peeling of the walls, which is of course of the dampness and the outside.
Yeah.
Yeah. That hopefully, that should be corrected once we button the building up.
Right, and like with them, even with the drilling, what they're doing now, it's like sawdust. It breathing that in, and a lot of people's complaining because they can't breathe and they have new rashes, don't know where it's coming from and all that.
Drilling's from the exterior stuff that they...
No, we pull the wire and do wiring, the elevator. And then a couple of years ago, we had Verizon commit to do the fiber optic through the building, and that was...
A mess.
That was a mess. They said they cleaned each time they drilled, but, you know, it was subjective as hell.
Now, they put fiber optic in the building?
Yes.
Is that for the FiOS? So everyone can get FiOS if they wanna pay for it, basically, if they went into every apartment?
They offered it to us for free and said, you know, in a few years when they change over, you're gonna have to pay for it.
Right, oh, that's a great...
Free's a great word, I said, come in and do it.
Well, and now there's programs where you qualify, which I would think most of our residents do, you can get that for free, so when they follow up about that, let us, you know, let us know so that we can make sure that the right programs are helping out.
Yeah, we put out the information, the flyers, I don't know if anybody took advantage of it.
Right.
But we do have the internet...
The connectivity program.
We have the wifi on the first floor, which has been helpful. They used to go over to have the burrito and steal their signal. But now they don't have to do that.
I'm sorry, what did I miss, vent cleaning?
Vent cleaning.
That was it?
And the dust, and the dust from the drilling for the, for the fixing of the elevator.
Oh, okay. So just like a good interior cleaning.
I know they do the main shaft, I have to, we have to see if they can run the other shafts, you know, like the ones around the kitchen. On each floor.
Is there any possibility that we could, well, it says the electrician is doing all this work in here, 'cause I still have the thermostat in my apartment where you can control the heat. Is there any way we can do that with this funding?
Put the regulators back in?
Yes, hook them back up or whatever, because they're there.
I don't think so, 'cause the reason, Mike, and then I had them before you making, that's how long I've been here.
Right, I know we had, you know...
Twenty-four years this year. Wow, that's awesome.
More used before.
The reason why those were taken out, there's a little history for you guys. The lines that led to those regulators would, as Paul Caverly used to always say, gunk up. He actually bought a piece of it, I'll never forget, in here one time to a meeting. And the gunk that gets in those lines from...
Not being cleaned.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's not being cleaned, I don't know what it's from, um...
It's like a drain pipe when you take it out, it's like a drain pipe.
It was a constant maintenance issue, then it would affect the boilers, and so that's why they wound up, I guess they got an engineer in here or whatever, and they took all those out, and that's when we replaced all those boilers. That's actually the debt that's on these capital plans, you'll see it for the next year or two. That was a twenty-year loan, I think it was, so that happened when I first started here.
So those, those, those turn offs in the apartments don't work?
No, no, they were all disconnected.
So you can't regu, you can't regulate, like, your temperature and...
Well, when it's hot, they can open a window when it's...
You just open the window, put your hand...
And when it's cold, if they, if they write a work order, what Mike does, he goes up and caucks around the windows for any traps, so he'll caulk that.
And where is the main thermostat?
It's outside.
Oh, it's all based on outside?
Yeah.
And then the thing, when you push the button, it come in, that's another one. You can't see who's there ringing your buzzer, and it just flips, flips, flips up and down, you just push the button, if you don't know their voice or who it is. But that hasn't worked in years.
That hasn't worked since I've been here.
No, hasn't worked in years.
Wow, okay. Wait, so when, so when I push the button, you don't see...
I don't see you.
Ah, I didn't know that, okay.
Well, we know when you come in, when you come in the door, because we have camera covering the door.
Right there, but you don't, we can't see you because it's just up and down, up and down, like your TV when it goes crazy, and that's it.
Well, you bring up a good point too, security.
Oh, you do have a video there.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's supposed to see the person, but we don't.
I don't think your branch is, well, security.
Yeah, I can check, and that's something I think...
And that's a fairly specific...
Residents had mentioned to me too, especially since we have the scaffolding, there's gonna be new people on the property for construction.
All these people coming in and out, yep.
You know, during the summer, you know, we're right near the train tracks during the summer, people are walking around, you know, having more cameras, I mean, now every single house, I mean, the police are telling us, make sure you have rings, make sure you have lights, make sure, you know, have all of this stuff, because there's been so many, you know, car break-ins, and just, you know, in general, that's happening. Can we get more cameras and security, and where does that live, like who watches that, how does that...
We, the main cameras are in our office.
Okay.
We have screens, we have, I think, twelve screens.
Okay.
One for each zone, and it records, and at times, the police have committed and looked at our video.
Okay, and where are those cameras?
There's one on every floor.
One on every floor outside the elevator.
Okay.
And then one by each outdoor entrance, except in this room, this is a blind spot. And we were actually talking to smart about bringing them back in to get another camera in here.
That would be great, and then the east side of the building, that seems to be another area that might be a blind spot too, is there a possibility to get cameras on the outside?
If we had the light, I'd have to see, we have to see the light, I mean, we invested quite a bit in LED lighting around the outside.
Okay.
So it's much brighter than it used to be, and it's much more secure. But I don't look around that corner, so I'd have to do it at night to see how much light we get on that side. Where the dumpster is.
Oh, but the dumpster, yeah.
Yeah, I heard some residents are, feel a little bit concerned about that area in particular. And then the back hall, like during the stairwell, is, there's another somewhat of a blind spot in the stairwell, is what I was told.
Or if you come in one of the door, like this door outside, and make the turn in there, that's all we see. We only have the hallways.
Okay.
We don't have stairwells, I don't, you know, we can ask whenever here if they put another camera, and I don't know how many more empty spots we have, I have to find that out too. I think we have nine or ten zones now.
I mean, no one likes to feel like they're, you know, like, oh, we're on camera, but especially the entryways and the, you know, the places where people may not feel as safe with the summer crowd and with, you know, so much going on now in this building. This building's gonna be a hubbub for a long time, which is great. But I think more important to amp up the security.
Is that a service?
And we can ask, oh, sorry, go on.
Is that a service, the cameras, or is it just, they install them and then...
They install the wheel.
You're not paying like a monthly fee or anything?
No.
And they're wired, I presume?
So maybe we can have the MRPD come a little bit more frequently.
So it's interesting, I just said that to Paul this morning.
Okay.
I said, remember back in the day, like when my father was a cop in town here? The midnight shift, used to walk Main Street, I don't even think they do that anymore, checking every door. Like, maybe they could do that at night around this building. Just take a walk around the outside of the building, peek in the community room, make sure everything looks...
Well, the exterior lighting plays into that too, you know, so that they can see who's going around. But I was gonna say, you know, now it might be possible, I don't know what vendor you use for your cameras, but you can also do wireless cameras, you know, with rechargeable batteries. I just did a whole thing in my in-law's house, you know, with this simply safe, you know, it was easy.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's not as comprehensive as the one you probably have, but, you know, it's still, you can go on it, you know, and see what, you know, a quick story, I got a, I woke up two mornings ago and I looked at the thing and I had a message from the company, 'cause it's hooked up to the police, not here, but, and they, it said, oh, you know, your sensor went off in the house, the house is empty. It says, your movement sensor went off in the hallway, right? So I said, how could it be, is somebody in the house or whatever, you know? So I went on the camera for the outside of the house, and I didn't see anybody, and all of a sudden I see somebody walking with a flashlight, I'm like, who the hell is that? It's a cop, because they must have called the, they called the police station. So they came right away and they, and they checked it out, and obviously couldn't do that here because there's always people moving around, but the cameras weren't fine, you know? That's another option, if, you know, if you call someone, you could do, you know, you could do wireless. So, it took me like ten minutes to put it in, so, just to cover dead areas, you know, where you don't have to run electricity and stuff.
Yeah. But are, are there companies, and I know this would be an expense, are there companies that do monitor the cameras?
Yes, ADP and all the, there's several, AD, yeah.
Because I know the office isn't always in, you know, in use right, not everyone's always in the office.
Right.
So something especially in the evening.
But usually those companies are looking at, like, they're monitoring like movement.
Yeah, it's almost like AI.
Yeah, they're not gonna look at your camera all the time and say, oh, I see, you know, it would be like if that door's locked and somebody breaks in, well then their alarm's gonna go off.
Go off.
You know, if somebody broke in.
Got it.
But if somebody's in the building, you know, and they're going down a hallway, they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna look at that, it's usually...
And I think even with the new camera systems that are out nowadays with like the new AI stuff, like the town that I'm talk, work for, you know, we were talking about putting them in the parks and those cameras like learn what goes on.
Oh.
So that it knows when to alert and when not to alert. But the problem is here, there's so much movement constantly that probably would never alert, you know?
I mean, the best thing is really prevention, you know, people who have that, you know, who might think about coming in when they see the cameras, they're gonna turn around and leave, you know, especially if they know the outside is monitored.
The cameras, the lights.
And inside too, if somebody hits in, they're gonna see the cameras.
Yeah, we have, we have signed up for security on camera outside.
Yeah.
Just as a warning, you know, let people know.
Maybe some fresh new ones would be good too, once we get them, once we get them in.
Yeah.
But, you know, I've been here a little over nine years, and I can, I can remember two incidents we've had over the nine years. One was a former paramour of one of the tenants that climbed up into scaffolding and got in through a window. And we had, the problem there, that's where the blind spot on that side of the building was, because the camera didn't pick them up.
Yeah.
And they couldn't press charges because they didn't have any visual, this is what the patrolman told me. And there was one other instance where, trying to remember what it was. In other words, there was another entrance where somebody was in here and shouldn't have been in here.
I think it was somebody in here we found.
No, it was a front door.
Was it in the laundry room?
It was a front door when they broke the glass. The guy was intoxicated and went into the...
Oh, that one.
Yeah.
Excuse me, he did a vestibule and broke the glass. Then he got caught, he got found guilty, and he had to pay.
Pay for the restitution on those.
Excuse me.
But then we gotta work on our tenants too, 'cause if they want people to be sneaking in and out, they leave papers in there.
Yeah, they did the door open, they...
Mm-hmm, so they can get in, so that...
I mean, I know even myself, I've come here, like, I forget when it was, it must have been on the weekend or something, and you know, this door was plugged in, and I'm like, close it?
That's just a...
So you don't know, like, people, not out of purposeful, but if they go out this door, like, and as a senior, you have to push it hard, you know?
Have we ever had the, someone from the police department come and conduct the little like safety seminar? I mean, it might not be a bad idea to have them come once a year and say, you know, hey guys, you know, this is your home, make sure your doors are locked, you know, don't do this, don't do that. I mean, not that we have...
I mean, we're always telling them...
Not that we have tremendous crime in Bellmore, but you know, it's a...
We're always telling them at the meetings, don't let people in the building that you don't know.
Right, what to do if you see someone that's, that you don't recognize or you think is to no good, you know?
But in the same way that we're getting messages of, you know, make sure your doors are locked, make sure, you know, we're getting those now, I think that it's important, I think that the police presence would actually be a little bit helpful. And not scaring people, but just letting them know that actually this is serious and we, you know, this is the message we're giving to all the residents here in Bellmore right now.
Now, we have, do we still have a community officer? We did it once.
No, we've moved away from the community, the community, uh...
Community police.
Yeah.
But I think it's a good idea, just in general, I mean, we could even run something like that for the entire town.
Yeah.
You know, up at the Taylor Pavilion, have just a session on, you know, how to secure your home, what to do when you go on vacation, don't post it on Facebook, you know?
Oh, God.
Common sense things that people don't think about.
Right.
You know, don't tell people you're going away for a week, you know?
Yeah, until you get back, right.
I know my name is Goldstone, when they're in Europe or somewhere, you know, wow, okay, that helps.
Crazy.
So I mean, that might not be a great idea at some point to do that.
Yeah, a lot of our, a lot of our tenants are pretty responsible. We just had to, we did it to, like, a week ago where a gentleman came in that door and there was a tenant waiting for a pickup for a cab, and he did look familiar. And so she told me and he called the police. It turned out it was an aide for one of the, one of the tenants, but nobody had recognized him, so she did the right thing.
How do you handle like the deliveries, like the Amazon deliveries and all that? Do they just leave them outside, or...
In that little foyer, in the front of the building.
'Cause I imagine that must get...
You know, the front of the building has two doors, foyer, and then two more locked doors.
So they can put them in the building.
So they leave them in there.
Right, well, I guess, yeah, we got a half hour for the video.
I have something, is there, when I'm at the meetings, a lot of things come up, and a lot of them seem like good ideas and information comes up, but I think communicating with the residents here, I'm not sure how well that happens. I know for the borough, we start slapping things up on Facebook, but I don't think that works here. So when something comes up, maybe we need a more, I don't know, grounded approach. Maybe like printing flyers, putting them in mail slots, putting them in mailboxes when something comes up. So they actually have a piece of paper, and the one thing I'm thinking of specifically is this came up, I'm sorry, I don't have the paper, this, this program, this came up at a meeting.
The blue thing, yeah.
I brought it in.
Does, do all the residents know about this?
Generally, yeah, well, we get a flyer, we make copies and Mike puts them under each door.
Oh, good, good, because I know communicating with them, 'cause I've asked people and it, yeah.
But the bottom, the main problem is, we have a tenants association, but they're not active, and Ellen can attest to...
They won't come, I'll be down here by myself, maybe one or two people.
And that's the perfect vehicle for communicating and getting everything up to date, and they just don't participate.
Okay, I know that's difficult here, but I know that these things come up, and I don't know if everyone... Okay, thank you, yes.
Do we have three minutes now?
Yeah, that's a good thing, I'm very excited.
Right.
Better than not, right?
They'll be glad to use that scaffolding more than just the the technology around the building, they can actually use it.
Yeah.
As far as getting people to come to the meetings, I.
You see nobody down here now, right, Bill?
I know, but yeah, I, we've experienced with the library, so I always joke, if you if you offer food, they will come, basically, that's.
Maria was about to bring food.
But they need to, they need to know ahead of time, I think, though, that's the, that's part of it, is that, you know, like, a little flyer, you know, don't forget the meeting tonight, we've got.
You're right, right. Right.
Well, I get, it is posted.
We've got, you know, food or we've got bagels or come down for.
We can always try to work with some of the the local vendors, I mean, it's not a big, you know, like.
That's true.
You know, get, even if you get.
Jersey Mike's is always helpful, we got this from hot bagels.
Twenty sandwiches or something like that. I guarantee people come, if you're offering, you know, like.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an idea, I guess, but be curious to experiment, see if that if that would bring more people to the meeting.
You just get twenty anyhow with food.
Right, yeah, exactly, that's, twenty is good, twenty is good.
Yeah. That's good.
That's good. Twenty is always, well, we figure.
Twenty is better than love with food.
Like for St. Patrick's Day.
Hey, nobody signed up.
You don't have to have a meeting every month, you could have a quarterly meeting if you, you know, if you wanna start, you know, say, you know, quarterly meeting. We can try to get somebody to donate some food and see if they come, right, as an example, you know?
That's no problem.
All right, let's 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 work with that, maybe we'll advertise a, it'll be a free TV giveaway or something, get it out here, spring night.
You know, you could do it every season, you know, spring, spring meeting, you know?
We even have the free bingo where they get the uh gift cards to shop right.
Gift card, I know.
And they have them?
Five, ten, fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
Do they come for that?
We only get about four or five people coming to do this.
Oh, my goodness.
And my daughter.
And her daughter, and she wins.
My daughter.
We make sure she wins.
Look at this town, we're taking a picture, taking one of our bitters, that's great, that's exciting.
They take a gift card.
These are the bitters, yeah.
We do, we do twice, you know, the second Wednesday and every month. And uh they know about it and I says, we get it, you know, it's a waste of time, really, to me, it's a waste of time, but.
And you know what I think part of is too, and I I mean this with no disrespect, and again, it's because I've been here for so long. A lot of the residents have been here as long as I've been here, they're getting older.
Yeah.
You know, when I first started here, yes, they were younger, more involved, they're getting old.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, how many's been here now, it's only about.
A lot.
It, no, it's not a lot.
Well, Missy's here, she's already eighteen years.
And Missy, well, she never comes to anything anyhow when we first, when I first came, she would come in, okay, and that and that and that. And if she wants them, she'll take it up to her room, but she never participates, never, okay? It's just the Russians and myself, we're the oldest.
Yeah.
The rest are all people that's come in after us, the others are all gone.
After.
How many do you see, do you have an idea just off the top, like, how many new residents over like the last five years?
Oh, okay, the third floor, I'm the oldest.
It's been a bunch.
Yeah.
The only only ones there, they're already know.
Maybe ten. So what is that like, ten people on each floor?
Ten or.
The second floor, it's all new people since I've been here, all new people, cause.
Yeah.
What's his name, mother, uh.
A cock, Lilian.
Cock, Lilian and all of them are all gone.
Yeah.
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 The Corey's and them, they're all gone, everybody's all gone, every floor. Except for now, the sixth floor, he got the two up there and myself and then Missy comes next. The rest are all new residents, they just don't care, they want, they come, they think they they uh, I get the attitude that we're supposed to hand feed them, no, if you wanna come down and enjoy the meal we cook, you come down. If not, I'm not gonna be bothered, I'm not running to floor to feed you no more, no, I'm not doing that.
Well, maybe.
And that's what they want.
Well, that's what we had as a door dependant.
That's the attitude they have now, that we're supposed to deliver their food to their door, not me, I'm not doing it.
Okay.
Okay? Even when you cook outside, it's the same thing, not unless they're walking by, they grab a plate, what do you do, go upstairs?
Do you ever have any useful guests?
That's the. Huh?
Then you ever have any useful guests?
We had the the singers, we had the kids, and we had so many people for that, we had a lot of seniors for that, that was great.
I had, I had every. I had y'all.
They come down and.
They did come down that.
They come down for that every year.
And that was the first time we had a a a big turnout like that in a long time.
Okay.
It's a thought, you know, maybe.
So we can, I mean.
Well, we had the music here, we had the bar outside, you know, not that we supposed to, but we always set it up, you know, uh.
Yeah.
I know nothing about.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you didn't know nothing about that, but when we had the big.
You used to have big picnics outside.
Big pics outside and everybody would come down.
We used to rent the grill.
Grill and everything, I had everything here for them and, but now we can't do it because they don't come, they don't show up, it's just like an awful. Everybody wants to, I don't know what it is.
Well, they, we try every year, so let's see what happens for like Fourth of July and, you know.
I'll be working.
I know you're always working.
You need to stop working. Enjoy your summer.
That's part of it, I enjoy it down there.
Mm-hmm, let's talk to everybody.
And everybody enjoys you down there too.
But it's it's.
Whatever's best for you is out, is what is what everyone wants, that's all.
But still, well, so we, you know. Just practice, you know, and I just like my kids already said, are you, where are you gonna have your cookout this year, I said, what cookout? You know, I don't want all them to come and and the people down here don't come, only just to pick up the food and go upstairs and not participate.
Do you have like a?
I call it Family and Friends Day.
We um.
I don't think I had it last year, no, I didn't have it last year, Family and Friends Day, and the whole town is invited.
Can you do like a, like a coffee talk, you know, like a little like, even even if it's like a women's gathering or like, you know, and and you know, like, okay, we're having coffee and, you know, and bagels on this day just to talk. You know, and call, you could literally call it coffee talk, you know, or whatever, make fun of coffee talk, you know?
Coffee.
Coffee talk.
Coffee.
Um, you know, or something more, and I I can help you if you want, if I if, I mean, that's something that, then we'll see, just try.
Whatever, and that's why I I want the bingo game, it is no money out of their pocket, they they, we're helping them with their groceries.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, the women's club used to run bingo and that.
That didn't go over, when the women's club was coming in here, they'd give gifts and stuff.
They came in for bingo. But I would, I'll never forget, they wanted to bring bottles of wine, I said, no, 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 they cannot be the gifts.
No, no, no.
That's so funny.
They they don't need the wine.
No, no, no.
You know, we we could have sessions here like, if I wanted to do a um, like a meet mayor, you know, once a month or once.
Because.
With the mayor, meet the mayor.
I think that, you know what, I think that'd be a great idea to come down.
I'll be with the mayor.
I've been thinking of doing it in general, you know, in in uh in a couple of weeks, I'm gonna have a lot more time and I'll be around more, but I I always looked at that as a positive too, you know? Just to have like, you know, breakfast, you know, with the mayor, you know, I could have one here.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You know, it would be like this, you know, you can have coffee, read paper, but and then anybody wants to come down, comes down.
Yeah.
And bagels and coffee.
Come down.
Yeah.
If they don't, then we'll just sit here and talk.
Talk, right.
That's all. Right, I mean, that's an opportunity.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm sure we'll hear, you know, a lot of gripes and probably hear some good suggestions.
Right, that, well, that's, I'll tell you, all the, every gripe that I've ever gotten has turned somehow positive in some way, like, cause then you whether it's just understanding where someone's at, you know, or saying, okay, well, what can I do about this issue? The one of the things that um this grant, I just wanna thank, I really thank Gianna and really thank Sandy too, for putting out all of like, you know, continuing to talk about the BHA building, because I feel like, you know, I'm so glad that Chris Smith um pushed this forward, I'm so glad that, you know, you, Paul and Amy and and, you know, Ellen, you guys have been so dedicated to like, no, we're not giving up on this. And a lot of people, when I was like, oh, we're going for this grant, were like, good luck, good luck, oh, you're going, doing something in Congress, good luck, you know? And like staying in in the game and fighting for it and just like having like, okay, you know what, we may lose some, but you know, keep this optimism that we can do it, and it really does help, it helps when it's in the press, you know, it helps when it's, you know, online and believe me, I know how um also sticky those those things can be, um but I just wanted to read, since you guys are here.
Can I, can I just, how long did it take from the time you guys started this process?
I started, I talked to his office in twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. When it became evident that we were, we had done a Band-Aid uh approach about five years ago, seven years ago maybe, where our super had worked on the cement concrete.
Right, right.
So we rented one of those six-foot scissor lifts.
Mm-hmm.
And he went around and patched all the holes, all the cracks around the building, and that bought us a few years. But it still didn't deal with the water getting behind it, you know, it's still at the top, managed to get it in.
The grant, I was, like, when did you actually file the the grant application, was it?
We filed it um in March, it was March of of twenty twenty, or February of twenty twenty-three.
Was it twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, so.
Um, so it's, yeah, it's been a year.
It's not bad, that's not bad actually.
It wasn't, it was supposed to be coming much sooner, but it, we we uh.
You're dealing with federal budgets, you know?
Yeah.
Well, HUDs, HUDs, really, some of the emergency funding we got for HUD, I thought, we were waiting to hear, waiting to hear, and then suddenly.
Yeah, that was.
And can you disclose that now, are you able to disclose?
Now we can do three hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yeah.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful.
Wow, I got that, yeah, recently, yeah.
That's beautiful.
But prior to that, you also had a, like a ninety-nine thousand.
Ninety-nine, and that helped with the scaffolding, which was, I'll be honest, right, I mean, that was so extremely important.
Right, yeah.
That's our normal capital fund money that we get every year, which is what this is, we get allotted so much every year and that's what we use to do this stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, grants are important because you have very limited income, you know, so you can't.
And we are not allowed, here's the other interesting thing, I'm not sure if you're aware of, as uh HUD has a deed restriction on our building.
Mm-hmm.
So we are not able to go out and take debt.
So how was, how do you have the, you have a loan here that you're paying off?
That was a pooled loan for uh a lot of the housing authorities in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, so they just went out and you got a piece of it, yes.
Yes, yes.
So how did they expect you to do things if you can't get debt?
Bingo.
They don't.
If you can't borrow.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
I mean, your your income is limited, you know what it is, basically, every year, it's a rent, right, you don't have any other source of income.
Yes. Operating subsidy we get from HUD and we get the capital fund money.
Yeah.
So it's it's tough.
Yeah, so you have to be aggressive with the, with the grants and stuff.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, you don't wanna use grants to fund your operating expenses because when the grant ends, you're destroyed.
Exactly, exactly.
But I'm sure there's enough capital claims that can be done to to use up capital money.
Yeah, well, we, we, all all these are uh heat heat uh double paint, heat.
Yeah, glass.
Glass all the way around, because this roof was cold, including the doorway, you could feel the breeze coming through it.
All the way down.
We replaced the roof because it, they had patched it several times and it was me I had patched it, they had to put it all new roof.
Parking lot.
We did the parking lot because we developed some potholes that with the elderly, we can't have any obstacles, trip trip hazards out there, so we had to do.
Do you have a list of like your priorities, like, you know, like a wish list, like, these are the things that we wanna do, like in a, like in a, in some order, like, these are the worst things?
I I wish we could get ahead of it, Jerry.
Yeah, no, I mean, just to put it down, like, to say, oh, you know, the next thing we would like to do is this, you know, and after that, we'd like to do this.
Yeah.
And then we can go out for, we can work on it.
We'd like to do this.
I think the next biggest thing to do is this room, no, after we get the outside of the building.
What would you do to this room?
Well, like you said, green carpeted, clean it up.
The other thing I think that would be good, if you just listed the things, do you have a list of things that you've done? Like, you know, put it like in a little goose letter or something, you know, in the last five years, cause I think some people may have the sense that nothing's being done.
Done.
Yeah.
Nothing's being done, it's just a building, but I think it's important to to advertise and let people know, well, there are things being done. Like you said, we repaved the lot and such and such a year, we had, we had the elevator, we had new.
The elevator is gonna be such a huge.
Whatever it is, I think it's to your benefit to to let.
Right.
What's it's done?
We had, we installed wifi.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's a.
And even before that, like under the Paul Cavalli days, uh we went through and it took a long time where we re- rehabbed every single apartment in this building.
That's wonderful.
Oh, yeah.
Every single apartment got done.
That's wonderful.
Except to.
Except maybe it's one.
There's one down.
Is there one or two left?
One, yeah, one.
The Russians, cause they don't wanna, they don't wanna, they don't wanna disrupt it.
They don't wanna move out.
Right.
So whenever that becomes available, we'll do that, I think there was one more.
Yeah. One more what, apartment?
Do it, yeah, I think we were down to two.
Okay, we could hit the brick wall out front.
Cause we used to budget like ten thousand a year for a total, we have a unit, which is everything, typically the kitchen, all new carpets, you know, everything.
Partitioned apartment to get, so they can sit in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, demo the whole thing and start fresh.
We did a front, we did a front out there.
That's what I was saying, that brick wall we put in out there, so that you get closed-in area they can sit in, that would be nice, wouldn't it?
We did.
But we did that, that's what I'm talking about, that class partition, that's up out there?
We did, but it's.
Oh, okay, that's partition, that's up out there?
Yeah, that used to be all open, so you could sit out there, cause all the wind coming off, you with that brick wall up.
All open, yeah.
Right, right. Okay, cool.
So that you can actually sit out there and not feel all the.
So they did it.
And if we can find some furniture, like for the spring cleanup, if we could find some outdoor furniture that's not like blowing away furniture or whatever, is that okay to?
Yeah, you.
I'm gonna just excuse myself, cause I wanna see if these bitters are here, cause I'm gonna just start bringing them in, so they can sign in.
Sweet.
I'm gonna just excuse myself, cause I want to see if these bitters are here, cause I'm gonna just start bringing them in, so they can sign in.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you about reading, you were gonna read.
No, I was, yeah, I'll wait, you know, I was really hoping that, um, we'd have more residents, um, here, because, um, you know, there were so many groups that wrote in these letters of support. You know, and one of them, Janice Blackburn, um, you know, not only was she a councilwoman, but she was on the B H A commissioners, right, she was a a commissioner at some point.
Right, she was.
Um, and she was the the president of the Women's Club and she just, I wanted to just read this, the one quote, and maybe I'll read it again at the meeting, but. It says, the residents are so dear to us, this is what she sent to Congressman Smith, and the issues of deterioration of the building have been heartbreaking to see. She stated in the letter for support, many of the residents of this building have been born and raised in Belmar in nearby areas and have contributed to many of the successes and legacies of this incredible borough. Keeping this building intact for them in the hundreds before and after them will be a source of pride for our entire district and state. And I just can't say how how true that is, and I hope that, you know, people know, the residents know, that the other Belmar residents see them in this way, you know, that. These, the contribution, um, and the successes and the legacies, you know, like, a lot of people built this borough, you know, and we need to make sure that they're being respected and cared for and.
Yeah.
You know, they deserve, they deserve the best, and that doesn't mean, you know, the Taj Mahal, but, you know.
Shouldn't say nothing about the median here, but you could say, you know, the.
It it means that they should be treated very, very, in a very special way.
Oh, you're okay.
See, that's what hurts when we can't have, we used to have, every month we had a big, everybody would come down, like a family dinner, we would do that. I mean, we, Amy could tell you, we had.
Yep.
Especially when Raimi was living, right?
Yes.
He, he didn't care, as long as everybody in the building was happy, he said, we gonna do this for them, we did it, we did it.
Yeah.
And we had fun, now we can't, I can't, we can't do it, because nobody comes down, it's a waste of money, it's no joke, you know, so, I mean.
You have a waiting list, right, for people to?
We're getting to a point, uh, I can see, Percy will open it up. We have an opening coming up next month.
Oh, you know, the lady that owns the Waffle House.
She live in Tampa, that's how we give that a reason, cause we do give priority.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, oh, you know, this is another thing we're gonna be dealing with, uh. Some of the other new housing offices, they're offering, uh, exercise room and all these, uh, wall, one one, a wall looks in the, she's moving there. Now, this is obviously much more convenient, if you, I'll, I'll take that.
Did you ever consider opening it up to non-residents?
You may be able to get more funding for rehab, rehabbing the building in in the future, if that were the case.
Cause I believe there are some, uh, you know, senior housings that are open to, I don't know if you're limited to a lot of, I don't know how to parse.
No, we're not, we could, we could take, we could accept it statewide.
Yeah, cause right now, we're, we're just residents of Belmar.
No.
But it's prioritized.
Prioritize.
We need to know that for affordable.
Well, this is what I I've been talking about.
Cause we've been dealing with affordable housing issues and one of the things that, uh, is critical in terms of. Whether or not we can use this building, it's affordable housing, is whether or not it's restricted to Belmar. If it's restricted to Belmar, then it's not something that we can use, but if it's open to all residents.
It's open all restaurant, but the the question is preference, so we'd have to take that, that is the caveat, is that the preference of Belmar residents.
Preference.
I have to ask.
Would have to be, you know, would have to be open to just Jersey.
They get the first.
However, I do think that that the affordable housing fund, so, you know, when there's a development, they have to, they pay a certain amount into the fund. I believe that that fund can be used to rehab buildings and use projects for these buildings, and that's why it is worth a conversation, it's worth a conversation.
Hmm.
Um, I I I personally understand why we would want to keep it as Belmar preference. Um, but it is worth a conversation for upkeep and maintenance, so you have to.
Is that in a, is that in a like charter, or where where is it, uh, written that, you know, it's preference to Belmar, is there a, is there a charter or a, um.
There's, uh.
Organizing documents, but.
Honestly, I I don't even know, it's.
The other ones are dictated by HUD, for example, we give preference to veterans.
Okay, obviously, yeah.
And we also give preference to people that are paying more than half their income in housing.
And that would be before the Belmar resident?
No, generally, we do Belmar residents first, and then the other two factor in.
Okay.
Hi, my phone, I'm now gonna close receipt of bids. We're here today, March fifteenth, ten A M, for receipt of bids for facade repair for Belmar Housing Authority. Uh, I'm gonna go through the bids at this time. First one is from G M Builders Group. This is always the fun part, finding the bid sheet.
It's in the last page of it.
Is it? Oh, there we go. Okay, G M Builders Group, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Can you do me a favor? Yes. The channels.
Right now?
Mm-hmm. Next bid is from Eco Construction.
Yes, Lou. You're here? All right, we started the meeting, so, come around to the back and I'll let you. Yeah. Yes.
Eco, is this, is this right, Eco Construction, eight hundred and ninety thousand. Next one is A T G Restoration Specialists. One million, six hundred thousand dollars. Next one is Blackstone Root. Oh, it's gonna be the first page, cause I went from the back. That's the way it is. Blackstone Root, one million, five hundred thousand dollars. And last one is Arash, Arash, I pronounced that wrong, Construction. Arash, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred. All right, so that's all the bids that we received today, apparent low bidder is Arash. Uh, then Eco, then G M, we will have the engineers and attorneys review all the bids, did anybody want to see anything before they leave? No, you're good, thank you, gentlemen, have a good day.
No. Thank you. Can I see a little bit, please?
I'm sorry?
Can I look at the little bit?
Sure. No. Yeah.
I'll make those one from here to there.
Yeah, yeah. It's like, don't like to know the difference. No, no, you don't want that. No, it's not. Thank you.
Can I have the next one, please, the next two?
Sure. Who were the next two?
It's G M Builders and Eco.
Here's G M.